Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Winthrop Town Council meeting for January 16th, 2024. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room. This meeting is also on Zoom in the form of a webinar. The phone number to get in is (301) 715-8592. The ID is (8901) 03-55554. And the passcode is (36214). Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Tascinieri.
Present.
Counselor DiSilva. Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Swolz.
Here.
Counselor Ayala.
Yeah.
Counselor DeRoss.
Here.
Vice President Belcher.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge and please remain standing after the pledge. Counselor DiMarco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to, please remain standing. I'd like to just take a moment of silence for Al Marley. Al was born and raised in Winthrop. Graduated Winthrop High School in 1975. Played in the Winthrop High School hockey team. Became a Winthrop firefighter in August of 1984 and retired in August of 2019 after serving 31 years as a Winthrop firefighter. He's the son of Elaine Marley, of Mrs. Marley's nursery, which has a staple for our children for over 45 years. Our deepest sympathy goes out to his wife Elaine, Eileen, I'm sorry. Children Jennifer and Kevin and the entire Marley family. Please take a moment. Thank you. Minutes from the January 2nd, 2024 meeting have been circulated. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Counselor DiMarco, seconded by Vice President Belcher. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those know, the ayes have it. Under general information and recommendations, we have two items. Is Anita on? Or no? No? Well, the first is informational and there is, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention. We were trying to get Anita Preble, but I am not sure if she's on the webinar right now. But I do want to publicize International Night 2024, which is Thursday, January 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30. It's at the Old Middle School Gym. There'll be sample foods from Brazil, Romania, Venezuela, Italy, Cambodia, Lithuania, Honduras, Mexico, Greece, Morocco, and many more. This is an event that's been held for several years and Anita does an incredible job. I encourage all that can to attend. It is free. And again, it is 6:00 to 7:30 this Thursday, January 18th, at the Middle School Gym. Now, I thought it would be a really good idea. We've heard a lot about this 3A MBTA zoning. And, you know, I've heard misinformation. I've heard, you know, it's very, it's difficult for a lot to absorb and understand and totally understand that. So I thought it would be a good idea to have someone from UTIL Architects and Planning. Her name is Zoe Mueller. And I'm going to have Rachel introduce her in a minute. And she's going to give us kind of like a 3A zoning 101. This is an informational session. I am not even asking the council for questions. Kind of reminds me of, you know, if you ever coach in youth sports and kid doesn't get playing time or something. At the end of the game, they always want to talk to the coach. And the coach, as a coach, I always used to say, and I was taught by many other people, you know, take 24 hours, then come back and call me with the same question. So I really want the council, as well as the public even, to try to absorb. There's a ton of information out there. To try to absorb this, we're going to regroup as a council at the next meeting with questions that we're going to submit to Rachel and to Zoe for answers. So they'll be 100% prepared and will be 100% prepared. But I appreciate Zoe coming and I'm going to turn it over to Rachel.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Some new faces. So again, my name is Rachel Kelly. I'm a town planner. And I'll help you kind of give a introduction tonight before Zoe takes the wheel. So the presentation you're going to see tonight contains preliminary data that was created this past spring and summer to help Winthrop get started with the 3A MBTA communities process. Last year, Winthrop received a small technical assistance grant from the Mass Housing Partnership, or MHP, in early 2003 to provide technical assistance for preliminary zoning, land analysis, mapping, and overall general assistance to start the 3A process. This was, again, a short-term grant with a really limited scope of work developed by MHP. And we were assigned UTIL Architects as a consultant. UTIL attended some public planning board meetings to help bring the planning board up to speed and help provide Winthrop with a starting point for the 3A requirements. I want to note that this grant had a really strict timeline. It ended in June 2023. And you'll kind of see that reflected on a couple of the maps. They have an older bus route on it, so you can kind of see where it ended. Very recently, the town was also awarded another 3A technical, 3A or MBTA communities technical assistance grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And this is in the process of going out to bid. The purpose of this new grant will be to provide Winthrop with any remaining information needed to meet all of the 3A requirements that are required by the state and to have new zoning adopted and submitted for approval or whatever path the town chooses to take. This grant's scope of work includes significant public outreach, public events, hands-on events, time here at town council meetings, as well as our planning board working meetings. The future consultant that's hired will be able to use the data already produced from the MHP grant, which we'll see tonight, and also incorporate public comment, concerns, you know, further land and zoning analysis, town council input. And we'll also be able to integrate all of that into any districts that we create in zoning language required to meet compliance. The general timeline, and this is a little fluid at this point, we're hoping to hire a consultant around the end of February, early March. There'll be public meetings and events throughout the early spring and summer. And I'm hoping for 90% completion by early September, using the fall for the voting and potential adoption process and, you know, including town council. Ultimately, this new grant will provide the town with all the necessary information and language and mapping and everything that it needs so that when the time comes, the town council can make an educated decision on 3A. The compliance deadline is set for December 31st, 2024. This is set by the state. But we want to make a decision in the fall so that it gives us time to submit all required documentation for the state. On the call tonight, we have Zoe Mueller from UTIL Architects. She was the project lead for the MHP grant. And she'll give a much more technical overview of the work that's been done to date with the planning board. And she'll review a lot of the math. There's a lot of math involved behind all of this, as well as some of the potential districts and compliance numbers. I want to really stress tonight that the districts you'll see presented this evening are not set in stone. We're not tied to this. It's a good start. Things will definitely probably change after public outreach and town council input and public input. But it's a really strong start. We've got, you know, a great foundation to work off of and I think it's going to help us move forward, you know, very efficiently. So if it's all right, I'll pass it off to Zoe.
My name is Zoe Mueller. I'm a planner with UTIL Architecture and Planning. And we're based in Boston. I've been doing this work with a lot of communities all around Massachusetts. I know this is, it's a lot to take in. So I'll do my best to give you a strong kind of overview. And we'll go from there. So I'll see a map there. So I'll give you a bit of background on the kind of the basics of the MBTA communities law. And then we'll kind of go into the work that we were doing for Winthrop in particular. So some of the basics here. It's a law coming from the state that requires multifamily housing to be zoned by right. So when we talk about multifamily, that can mean a lot of different things for a lot of people. In this context, we are talking about three or more units on one parcel. So that's the definition of multifamily for the remainder of this presentation. As a right, it really means that the development has to be able to proceed without needing like a special permit, conditional approval, things like that, that insert kind of an extra step in the process. You can use site plan review, which is, you know, gives you that level of kind of input at the point where there's an actual development proposal. But you can't use that site plan review to prevent a proposal from moving forward in its entirety if it's in conformity with the zoning that you've laid out. So it's kind of the foundation of it. And then there's a couple of important things to note. As a baseline, you are not allowed to require ground floor commercial unless it's under the specific new kind of set of requirements that sort of summarize or kind of refer to as mandatory mixed use in the sort of, you know, legislature for this law. So I'll give that overview in just a moment. But there's basically a very small window when you can do that. But otherwise, you have to be zoning for multifamily residential only by right. And then it's also worth noting that this residential can't have any restrictions on age, the number or size of bedrooms, or the number of occupants. And that's really just to make sure that it's possible for this to meet a variety of housing. It's not that it's not sort of pinpointing just one option for people. So I referred to this heat times here, the mandatory mixed use. This is something that is new since the work that we did with Winthrop through the end of June. And this is something that, you know, could be something that you might want to consider going forward. But it would sort of be sort of building from or sort of building on what the work has already been done. So this would allow you to get up to 25% of the multifamily unit capacity that the state requires with this law through a mixed-use district. So I'll get to that in kind of a little bit more as you're seeing it in the context of maps where it might make a little bit more sense. But it's essentially a way that you can kind of take credit for units that are resulting from a mixed-use district while also sort of meeting the other requirements of the law through other parts of your district's strategy. That all of the other kind of requirements need to be met by those other districts. It's kind of like a way to enable folks to do this kind of work in a mixed-use setting, which up until this point was completely prohibited under this law. So it's an important way that the state has made an accommodation for the feedback they were getting from communities. I mentioned site plan review. We do still have the option of including that as a way to manage the ultimate sort of design outcomes. It just cannot be made to prevent a project from moving forward in its entirety. And I won't belabor this, but there's a whole host of reasons why compliance is sort of the best route forward. There is a risk of simple enforcement and liability. There is a risk of lots of funds from a large variety of project funding sort of that comes through the state. So that's like, apart from just, you know, the value of doing it on its own, these are some of the other reasons to just keep in mind that it's important for a variety of goals. So now into the specifics. So there's a lot of numbers that you'll kind of, you'll see over and over in this presentation that are essentially the variety of targets that the state is requiring each community to meet. And most of those requirements are customized to your community. So for Winthrop, the district size you have to meet is at least 12 acres. At least 50% of that district area must be in one contiguous area. And then the overall gross district density across however many sub-districts you might have needs to hit at least 15 units per acre. So it needs to be dense enough that it's hitting that goal. So just those couple of requirements alone, they kind of have a little bit of a push-pull between them. And so that's the kind of what we were working through with the planning board and the town of Winthrop previously. This is kind of a little bit more involved way of kind of laying out some of those sort of aspects of the zoning standards that need to be met in order for this to be compliant. But the number that probably most of you will kind of be seeing or keep holding in your head is this 882 units. So that's the number of units that you have to zone for. And I want to emphasize that it's zoning for those units. It's not building those units. And it's also, it doesn't bear any relationship to the existing units that you have underground built in Winthrop already. So there's, you don't get credit for having those units built already. What the state is really looking for is they want to make sure that your laws allow for a particular density of units and a particular type of housing, namely multifamily housing, because it is so difficult to build that throughout the Boston metro area. So that's the, that's the sort of the baseline. These are all the numbers that we're kind of juggling to try and get to compliance. So in our process, we look at the existing zoning in Winthrop. Obviously, those districts interact with your existing zoning. So we took that as the starting point and ultimately went through a couple of different candidate sub-districts that were kind of refined further throughout the process. And where we landed with was this sort of set of three sub-districts that would contribute in different ways to the overall compliance. So you'll see Shirley Street sort of lining the coastline there. There's a sort of a thread of Main and Revere that connects a couple of key sort of nodes and places in the town. And then Winthrop Center, of course, which is, you know, the town CBD, sort of surrounding that with, sort of reinforcing that with multifamily housing around that core. So you can see here that this is, you know, was developed in relationship to the existing bus routes, to the existing commercial zoning, and to the proposed bus network redesign routes, which might, you know, ultimately become the sort of pathways that the buses move along in Winthrop. And I do want to note that we were aware that the bus routes have already changed slightly since June of '23, when this map was generated. So there's a slight distinction here. I think they're putting along Walden Street here instead of Herman. So just to highlight some of the goals here, the idea was that this set of sub-districts collectively are prioritizing transit-accessible areas. They're strengthening the relationship and encouraging the foot traffic that's between the Central Business District and Main and Revere, that they're collectively preserving existing commercial uses. So not, you know, whomever at this time, there was no option for mandatory mixed use. And so we're really staying off of those commercial areas to make sure that we weren't creating a situation where that commercial use would be displaced by an all-residential use. And then lastly, encouraging reinvestment for resilience within the FEMA flood zones. And that's largely relevant for the Shirley district. So here, just kind of zooming into these. I won't kind of belabor the point here. But for Shirley Street, this was, is an area of existing density that's already, you know, higher than that 15 units per acre target set by the state. So it was a sort of a no-brainer to include that and really, you know, represent or sort of allow for the kind of development that exists there already, which has a lot of triple-deckers mixed in with, you know, two families and some cases, single-family homes as well. And it's sort of lined by commercial on one side. And this is one of the places where there is an interaction between this potential zoning and the current FEMA flood plain. And so there's an opportunity there for there to be kind of a positive relationship to kind of encourage and sort of enable reinvestment in building types that currently are non-conforming to the zoning that exists there now. So this just gives you a little bit of a feel for some of the work that we began around investigating the relationship between the sort of areas of flooding and the sort of ultimate zoning parameters that might get embedded in a new district in this area. For Winthrop Center, this focused on sort of the streets and sort of residential areas that immediately surround the CBD. And the idea here was to kind of provide that multifamily reinforcement to help drive sort of the business of the individual, you know, enterprises that are within that area. So it's something that, you know, has all across the nation really has been really important to reinforce commercial districts with enough people nearby to help drive sales and help them be kind of healthy and profitable. So that's kind of was the concept here. So you can see there's a pretty tight relationship there between the existing commercial districts, shown in that red boundary, and the suggested Winthrop Center MBTA communities districts surrounding it. And then this is just a highlighting, this is, you know, we are not including in this district the middle school and ice rink because there's so many custom needs there that the parameters that we've developed for the remainder of the sites was really kind of in friction with the ultimate goals for those which need a little bit more of a custom solution. So we opted to not include those. So they're not incorporated by the sort of the formula-driven approach to the zoning that's necessary to kind of meet the compliance goals of the state. And then last but not least, Main and Revere. This is really seen as kind of the connective tissue between a lot of disparate, you know, commercial districts and also kind of transportation connections that are really important to, you know, places beyond the boundaries of Winthrop that are important for the way that people live their lives, commute patterns, et cetera. So the idea here was to kind of line those corridors with multifamily housing that could support those activities and create a little bit more continuity between those different areas. So now I'll take a little bit of time with the math. So this is where I think it's easy to kind of get lost in the details. And there's a lot of things to juggle here. So I'm going to kind of try and do it as clearly as I can. What you see on the left here is the name of the three districts that we just spoke about. The existing densities, so the built density of those areas now, not the zoned density, but what's built on the ground there now. You can see that all of these areas are actually already relatively dense. So Shirley Street is at 18.5 units per acre currently. The Winthrop Center area that we looked at is at 14 units per acre, so just below that 15 units per acre target. And Main and Revere is at 12.5 units per acre. So a little bit lower density, but still not so far off of that 15. So that's kind of the end of like existing. So everything to the right of that is suggested zoning parameters and the results from the state compliance model when we put those zoning parameters in. So the zoning parameters that we chose were, for Shirley Street, three stories. And then for Winthrop Center and Main and Revere, 3.5 stories. For the proposed minimum setbacks, these are really pulled off of the observed setbacks that we saw in each of these settings. So these subjects are intended to be very much in line with what's there currently. I'll go through them all in detail, but you can see them there on the slide. In all cases, we assumed that there would be a requirement of one parking space per unit as a minimum. And then we did put in a maximum units per acre of 27. We chose 27 because that allows for a three-unit, sort of the classic triple-decker on a typical lot in, for instance, what you see already in Shirley Street. So that density has a certain significance. So when you see 27, I know it's an abstract number, but if you envision like a typical triple-decker on a typical lot, that's what that sort of pegged to. And then from there, you start to get what the model, so the state compliance model, what it spits out when you put in all of those parameters. So on the right, you can see modeled multifamily unit capacity, district acreage, which is actually, you know, an input, but it's important because it's one of the compliance standards that we have to meet. And then the modeled district density. So you can see that in all three cases, if you look at the current totals line here that's in green, you can compare it with the line just below, which represents the compliance targets from the state. You can see that in all three cases, we're comfortably above that minimum that the state had set. And that's really because these districts were chosen with a, you know, a real planning logic in mind. And so we prioritize that planning logic, even though it does result in a slightly higher outcome. We think this is a really strong approach for Winthrop that really aligns with a lot of the issues and sort of priorities that came up in our discussions with the town and the planning board. So the result here is not 2,098 new units. This is 298 units could feasibly be developed across all of those districts if you were to say, like, remove everything that's there currently and build from scratch, that you could feasibly get to this number. So I know that the number is big and it's a little bit scary when you look at it and try and imagine fitting that into your community. But it does not mean that there's an expectation of this many new units. It's talking about, is it possible for someone to build up to that number over, say, 50 years? So that's kind of, that's one piece of it. The acreage, most communities have well exceeded the minimum acreage target because if you choose to have a slightly lower density, like closer to that 15 units per acre, you're going to end up with more area that's zoned. So denser, denser district, tighter, you know, smaller district. Larger district, you can get closer to that 15 units per acre. And then you can see we're at overall across those three, we're at 18.5 units per acre. And then the last bit of math, a little bit of a mind-bender, but this is intended to ensure that there's kind of a coherent like a concentration of this in one part of your town. It's not just spread out in lots of small fragments. So in this scenario, the Shirley Street sub-district is large enough that it counts as more than 50% of your total district land area. So that is hitting that compliance target for you. So that's why I say it was a kind of a grouping, that they work together to get you to compliance. So it's not necessarily that you can just like kind of pick and choose amongst them. They're each kind of playing a unique role in the overall equation. So I think I'll maybe pause there. I guess the other thing to point out here is that there is a slight difference. You know, the parameters are slightly different across these different sub-districts. And so you can see that, for instance, the modeled district density for Shirley Street is coming out at 17.5. And then for Winthrop Center and Main and Revere, it's coming out a little bit higher. That's partly because of unique characteristics in each setting of the parcel sizes. Shirley Street has a lot of smaller parcels by comparison to Winthrop Center and Main and Revere. So that's kind of how some of those things are shaking out. So there's a slight difference in kind of where the greatest density is, where the greatest number of units are. All those kinds of things are slightly different across each of the sub-districts. And then I'll just conclude with a couple of notes on defining height. This is something that we got a little bit into at the very end of our work with the town of Winthrop. But, you know, it's important to kind of lay out as you get further into the details of the zoning, the specifics of, you know, how much height you're allowing, not just how many stories, but the sort of the maximum dimension height. And so this has some relationship to the type of buildings you might see. So we've given you just a starting point of, you know, if you set things at different numbers, kind of what does that allow for in terms of building form? And so it really has a lot to do with the roof line and how much flexibility you're giving people with their foundation. The greater height you allow, the more flexibility you're giving people in that world. And then this is really a snapshot in time of where we were at the end of June. Just sort of, you know, highlighting that at that point, we've completed a fully kind of compliant option that was sort of the result of a lot of conversations up until that point. But as Rachel pointed out, there's still, you know, more outreach and input to receive. And this is by no means a, you know, a final set in stone district at this point. And so there's still room for revision and sort of reconsideration of some of the elements that are embedded in the approach that I just presented. And I think I'll maybe leave it there. And happy to provide supplemental information that is relevant to help people kind of get their heads around this. I know it's a lot of numbers to take in and a lot of abstract ideas to really integrate and kind of work from.
Thank you, Zoe. I could speak for myself and say I could have a million questions right.
I could speak for myself and say I could have a million questions right now and this could take us two hours, but I didn't want to have questions now. But if you're still on, Zoe, can you just explain, because either I didn't hear it at the beginning, the distinction between, like, there's four different distinctions for different communities and how that 882 number came in?
Yeah, I was a little bit muffled on my end, but I'll stay on until I've been told that I can get back.
Repeat just closer to the mic.
Oh, Zoe, can you hear me now?
No.
Zoe?
Are you muted?
Rachel, do you have that information?
I don't.
You know, there's four different distinctions, how communities are categorized, where categorized is an adjacent small town.
Yeah.
Right? And that's how those numbers come from. They take your 2020 census, they basically, in our category, it's 10% of the 8,800 units we basically have.
I have those.
You know, I think.
I have the four communities.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there's four communities, rapid transit communities, which the deadline was this past December. I think there's 12 of those. Commuter rail community, adjacent community is what we fall under, and then the last one is adjacent small town. Those are the four different.
Is there a question of what are the four distinctions?
Yes.
Do you know the four districts?
Yes, the four distinctions that the state lumped each community into.
So the, right now, sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but right now we have three districts that we've evaluated. So there's the Shirley.
No, that's okay. I'm.
The Main and Revere one, and the Winthrop Center one, which sort of does a sort of ring around the Winthrop Center.
All right, well, we're going to get back to Zoe, but we want to ask, we're going to ask the council to submit questions and have a full presentation on the questions.
Then like the different, like, targets that you have to meet, is that what you're asking?
No, that's okay. Thank you very much, though, Zoe, we appreciate it.
I'm not quite understanding your question.
We want to get information on our options. Can we say?
No.
Can we say, can we ask for an extension? Can we do multiple things? You know, why would we present 2,000 units when we only have to do 880 or supposed to do? So I'm going to ask the, this has been emailed to each of the councils, I believe, this presentation, correct? And we're going to ask for input from the citizens who were here tonight and watching, also input from the council. This will be on the agenda at the next meeting. Maybe Rachel could give a little bit more of a timeframe of how this potentially could work. Rachel?
Oh, okay. Right, so like I mentioned. I think it's just repeating, yeah. So in terms of next steps, we're out to bid. I submitted, you know, the scope of work and everything for this future upcoming grant to procurement, and they'll advertise that. And then from there, I'm hoping, you know, end of February, early March, to have a consultant on board. They'll make a little time to review the data that we have and probably do some comparison to what's existing and compare the data to what we already created with MHP. From there, pretty much right off the bat, we'll do some public outreach, it'll probably be one big main public meeting, not a far cry from what we had tonight, just sort of go over it educational, go over the numbers, explain how all of this works, where it came from, why the state's requiring it, and, you know, everything that the state's asking all these towns and cities across Massachusetts to do. And then from there, kind of start, you know, hit the ground running, take public comment at that time, probably have an opportunity for other public comment, town council input, that kind of thing. And then putting, applying that to the districts and the numbers and everything that we have existing and altering and tweaking things as needed. I want to do a public forum that's a little bit more casual, kind of an open house. I think it'll be a good opportunity for people to come, sort of see things in person, see things up close. And not everybody likes to talk on a public forum or talk on a meeting on Zoom and have them have an opportunity to come in and be face to face with our consultant, a little bit lower pressure, and kind of ask the more nitty-gritty questions that they may not be comfortable answering on a meeting. So we'll do that. And then in addition to that, in terms of public outreach, there'll be opportunity for the consultant to come to the meeting, kind of give probably quarterly or so updates. And then in addition to that, they'll also be, you know, working directly with the planning board, will probably, those will be public meetings as well, maybe a little bit more of a working meeting. But there'll be a lot of opportunity, like I said, there'll be a couple of public opportunities to give input. I have in the scope of work at this time to be at 90% completion in terms of the written zoning, the zoning updates, any height changes we want to make or anything. In addition to that, incorporating all public comment and pairing down our zoning districts into the smaller size that we want to accommodate those 880 units and putting that all together. I'd like to be at 90% completion for that so that the board is in a position that, you know, they can, you know, there'll be the recommendation and the back and forth, I know because there's rules and ordinances and everything, and the board can be in a position that they can make, you know, a decision one way or another on how they proceed with that. So in terms of the voting and everything, obviously, we're kind of working back from the December 31st timeline. There'd be a window where we'd have to send in documentation and everything to the state invoicing, that kind of thing. But kind of working back from there, hopefully in the fall, we'll, you know, have a vote at that point.
Ultimately, this will come back to the council, and ultimately, the council needs six votes to pass any kind of zoning changes.
Yeah, I believe it's a majority vote.
It's a supermajority.
A supermajority.
No matter how many people are voting, you need six yes votes. Okay. And we will be submitting, I'm sure, numerous questions to you. And at our next meeting, we'll either ask you, Zoe, to come back, and you'll have ample time to prepare for the questions and so we could get a good feeling, because there will be several, I'm sure.
Definitely. Yeah, but to me and myself, you know, we can also, there's certain questions until our consultants onboard and contracted in. You know, if I can't answer them, you know, we can potentially work with you. Till if that's, and then there's also the potential opportunity, I can send certain things, I think, back to the state and they can provide, you know, answers to those kinds of things until we have a consultant onboard. And then it should, we'll have somebody right there at our disposal.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks, Zoe.
Thank you. Should we start sending questions now?
Yeah, as we're going through the meeting. I'm going to ask for the town manager's report to be taken out of order. The report might help alleviate some of the questions that will be coming in public comment, or not alleviate, but give some sort of idea. But is there a motion to, is a motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Councilor DiMarco, to take the town manager's report out of order? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just a couple of quick things before I get to the meat of it. We've got the MMA coming up this weekend, a lot of you have signed up. It's Friday, Saturday, up at the Heinz Convention Center in Boston, so certainly for new members and members that have been here, it's a great take, fires a lot of good seminars, training, things like that. So certainly take advantage of it, and I'll be there as well. I know we talked about it a while ago, but I do want to request, now that we're coming up on a one-year clock or a little less now, the next meeting, I'd like to try to request that the council set up a Community Preservation Act Committee. We had talked about doing that to educate the community and try to bring the Community Preservation Act forward in next November's election. So I want to at least kind of get the ball rolling on that. Now, the thing, I just want to give an update on the, I mean, I know there was a lot of flooding last week, before the weekend, the storm, and then obviously Saturday. I was in town with Director Cala, the fire chief. We utilized the high-water vehicle, drove around, saw all the flooding. We have, you know, for those who haven't, we aren't working on it, we are, several different layers of that. There's, you know, MVP grants that we were awarded with Revere and Chelsea to do what's called living levees down by the Morton and Banks Street area. They're in, they've done some survey work down there and they're in the process of getting, you know, we have some design money for that already granted and we're working on that. Coincidentally, last week, I think it was January 3rd or 4th, I was reached out by Congresswoman Clark's office, and there is a grant program that the federal government's offering that we were invited to put a project forward. So I worked with Director Cala, we were able to put together design money for not only tile, stone, and girdle stone area, but also the Pico Ave area neighborhood. So we requested $675,000. We gave them all the data, it's going up to committee now. Hopefully, we'll get some traction on that, but we are working on getting that involved. One of the things Director Cala and I did talk about, as I know, it's, you know, seems like it's every rainstorm now with tile, stone, and girdle stone, is to take a look at potentially putting, on a temporary basis, maybe some sort of a pump down there that would go into the manhole cover and pump the water, you know, directly out to the ocean as the issue there is obviously low-lying area. The water, you know, the valve that we did replace, the flapper valve down there that's now closes, you know, won't let the water out, you know, when we got high tide. So in order to get the water out, we're working on that as well. Director Cal is working on getting some pricing for that. Steve, did I miss anything? No, we got it covered, okay. Certainly, Director Cal, can you give any updates, you know, as far as specifics? But I mean, you know, we have a capacity issue, right? We have a ton of eight-inch pipes out there, not enough to handle the volume. Right now, the ground's saturated, certainly the back-to-back storms didn't help. And then the storm surge that we had on Saturday, I mean, it was an 11-foot tide to begin with. It was a three or four-foot storm surge, it got up to almost 15 feet. I mean, I was with the chief and, you know, Steve and everybody, and they hadn't seen it that bad in a while.
14'4".
14'4", so yeah, pretty close 15', but yeah, so that's where we ended up. So, you know, it was bad, I mean, absolutely, certainly working to make changes. I mean, it's not going to be a snap, you know, our fingers and get it done overnight, but we are working to get the money to do it and then, you know, move forward with it. You know, we've done, like I said, we did replace the flapper valve, we're going to look to make some other changes to alleviate some of the stress. I know there's been backyard flooding and everything in those neighborhoods, certainly saw it firsthand, you know, as we drove around, so, you know, obviously, that'll probably come out in public comment, but I just wanted to get that information out there, that we are working on it and we are making steps in the right direction, so.
Just to kind of go on, if you don't mind, the capacity, I mean, you hit it on the head, that's probably 75% of your problem is capacity with pipes. But not only is the capacity, in today's standards, probably four to five times inadequate. You have old clay pipe, which is your agents pipe, and you have so much infiltration during these back-to-back storms that not only is the rainwater filling these pipe networks, but you're getting inundated with infiltration. So it's a bunch of components that are creating what we're all experiencing in these last two storms.
Right.
In addition to the outfalls, the low-lying areas, all your problems are in the lower lying areas, the majority. And our outfalls, because our systems flow by gravity, most of our outfalls are buried, you know, to get the water to flow at these low elevations, the outfalls are coming, you know, down at Pico Beach, the outfall is about three feet below the sand. Morton corridor, those outfalls, we've got four or five outfalls over there, they're coming out two feet underneath the marsh muck. So you have a lot of issues to fix. But it's stuff that does need to be fixed.
Which is why the engineering's so important on this, because we, you know, a lot of, it's not just a quick fix, it's not just installing a pipe or putting a flapper valve in, it's, some of these low-lying areas are going to require pumping stations. We're not just going to be able to reroute the water, it's going to have to pump it up to upgrades and get it out to where it needs to go. So we want to make sure we get it right. So that's why we're trying to get the grants and trying to get the engineering work done, so. And certainly, open to questions.
All right. Councilor Yello?
I thought what you just reported and the work that you all have been doing over the last week has been really terrific, so thank you for that. I think it's important, if we get news on the grant, to disperse that news to everybody.
Absolutely.
If we are able to get the pumps and figure out interim pumping so we can alleviate the next storm, to sort of announce it to the neighbors.
About it all.
I think communication's going to be important because it's very clear there's been a pattern of storms, they're going to continue, and we've got to sort of correct that. There are a couple of other areas that, I know Steve had mentioned, Washington Street, Shirley Street, et cetera, which are being inundated from the ocean, have not been part of the MVP grant. Do we have any work underway, planned work underway, to sort of identify the remainder of those areas? Like, what's going to be, what's underwater today when we have these big storms? What's the projection for the next 10 years and then have really a master plan approach to not just keep chasing our tail, but to sort of try to get in front of it?
That would be the next, on the MVP program, those were idea, those areas were identified on the MVP grant. The Woods Hole Group came in and identified that, you know, did the Morton Park, because we thought that was the one that needed it at first, and then we're going to work our way over there. But yes, they have been identified and work out.
Okay.
Yeah, Shirley Street, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor DiMarco?
Building off that a little bit, Tony, you know, we're talking about chasing grant money and, you know, Director Cala detailed some of the stuff that we absolutely have to do. You know, whether we get that grant money or not, we're going to have to do something. So my question is, have we, I mean, why don't we just, why don't we get to work on it? Because we've got to do it no matter what. We need to take care of that. What kind of emergency funds can we get to get started and then chase the grant money after the fact? Let's get this work done and alleviate it for our homeowners.
I mean, certainly, we could, you know, use some of the money we have set aside, but that would be something we could bring to the council. If that's something the council wants to do, that's certainly, you know, if the votes are there. But, I mean, I would say, you know, it's a holistic approach. I mean, there's other needs of the town, we got a capital program, I mean, other things have to be addressed as well. And there is money out there for this. This isn't just happening here. There's going to be money freed up from the state, because this has been an issue in surrounding communities, you know, it's not just us with the aging infrastructure. And it's been identified, especially this past summer with the constant heavy rains we had, so we're trying to take advantage of the grant monies that are out there as well.
Okay.
Councilman Munson?
I'm sorry. I would agree, thank you, Council President. I would agree, I don't, I mean, I appreciate that we're doing some short-term fixes, we're looking into the pumps, but it seems to me that action is needed immediately. If it was your home or our home, anyone's home, you wouldn't say, let me hold out until my mother-in-law gives me, you know, a check for this, or some kind of gift of money. We would just go ahead and take the loan out, get the project resolved, and move forward. I'm just wondering, A, why can't we get a quote for every flood zone? B, why can't we get, bond the money out and then pay those loans back as we get grants coming to us? And then just get the project going right away? Even if, I'm just, why don't you, can you just answer me, why can't, what does it take to get a quote for all flooding projects?
We've already got, we've just got to put it out to bid. We've already got the one for, you know, Pico and the area around.
And so it takes money to get, just to get a quote?
Well, to put it out there to request it, yeah, we have to put parameters.
Right, so he says he wants to do it right. You know, he wants to get a flood, he doesn't want to mess this up. This is a long-term fix, this should resolve flooding in Winthrop for the long haul. So what?
You can't just get a construction quote. You've got to get an engineer onboard, you've got to get an engineer in quote, you've got to do survey work, you've got to do hydraulic studies, you've got to design this thing right. And then at the end of the engineering, they're going to say, this is your construction estimate. You don't start with a construction estimate and then get one.
So you're saying we need money to be able to get the engineering?
You need money to engineer, and then you'll get your answers as to what it's going to cost you to build these new systems.
And then secondarily, why couldn't we?
They've got a permit them as well, they're all.
Even if that were the case, why not just go ahead and take the, borrow the money or use our reserve funds and then go ahead and pay them off with grants as we can get them through the federal and state funding? Is that possible?
It's the will of the council. I was asked to look at grants, and that's what we were doing, so that's the change of pace, and we want to, certainly, we can get the work done and go get the grant money if that's what the council wants to do and move the money around. But again, I would say, you know, things, you know, Councilor Yello talked about, we've got to, you know, look at all of their things that we've got going on. We were going to bring in, you know, the capital plan and the strategic to, you know, make sure that we're hitting all the things that are coming up and everything we've got to do. You know, if you focus all the eggs in this one basket, I mean, you know, and miss the grant opportunities, like, you can't just pay for it and then the grant will pay you back, like, you need to have the work to do.
Timing of the grants usually are.
They call it shovel-ready projects, you got to be ready to go, otherwise, you'll miss that grant money. So that's just, you know.
And one thing I wonder is, when you're asking for grants, wouldn't it be nice to be able to have a final number for all the flooding zones instead of having to ask for more and more and more? One lump sum to take care of all flooding for all of Winthrop for the long haul? Seems like that would be the right way to go about asking Catherine Clark and the federal government for real climate resiliency and then get this problem resolved over, you know?
Yes, but there's also, you got to remember, it's a competitive grant process, right? So you're competing against other communities. If you come in with too big, you know, it's a, you go in with too big of a number and ask for too much, you tend not to get, you know, anything. So you want to just make sure that's, and that's, you know, I've been doing this for 15, 20 years, getting grants is difficult, right? But, so there's a science to getting them and doing it this way, and we're also using the MVP program. We've already got money out there that's working on the Morton and Banks area. We're already getting that work done. There's already been grading work done, so.
I'm just of the mindset.
We're gonna have construction costs on that, you know, sooner rather than later, so.
I just don't think we should be waiting for, to resolve problems. I think we need to take care of it ourself and get this stuff resolved soon as possible.
Consul Dross.
Tony, can you just take a step back? When you were talking earlier about the emergency response that you guys had in this last, with the high-water vehicle, et cetera, just level-set everybody on what we have today in terms of just emergency response equipment. You talked about pumps, hoses, et cetera. Forgive the newbie counselor, but I just wanna be understanding, in my precinct, for example, which, you know, had the, and Hannah's, which had the lovely Shirley Street flooding. In that kind of situation, what do we have at our disposal right now to attack, like, immediately when something like this happens?
Well, the big advantage is the high-water vehicle. You know, luckily, our, you know, emergency responders were able to go out and get the grant money and get that vehicle, you know, through the UAC program, so battling other communities for that, we were able to get that. I was in it all day Saturday, driving around. We had our first rescue in it. We had somebody that car stalled out. We had to get them out of the car in the back and drive them back to the neighborhood up at Point Shirley, so that's great. We also, the fire department has pumps. As everybody knows, it may have been flooded out. The fire department will come out. They pump out your basements. You know, we have all the, some pumps available, certainly not as many as we need if we wanted to do what we're talking about down in Tilestone and Girdlestone, but we have that equipment. You know, so God forbid there was an emergency. We have the equipment and the ability to get people out of their homes and get them to, you know, the help that they need.
Okay, thank you.
Consul Ayello.
Maybe just one summary and maybe get the intersection between what Consul Damaco and Consul Munson wanted. In terms of a master plan, it seems like the rest of the MVP grant will, so you've got the short-term MVP that has looked at Morton Street, the longer-term MVP that's gonna look at the rest of the perimeter of winter. That should provide the ocean flooding attack and what we might be able to do against that. We've got the short-term flooding at the two neighborhoods, Pico and there, where we're gonna have a new emergency response with some additional pumps, et cetera, prepositioned to pump stuff out, as well as pursuing engineering. And I think Consul Damaco was saying, well, do we have to wait the three months or four months, 'cause you just don't know? One possibility, and Steve, this is really for you in terms of contractually breaking it up. I would assume the first thing you're gonna do is get the engineers to get out there and do a bunch of calculations and try to sort of level-set it, get to a 15% concept design for the solutions for those two neighborhoods. Perhaps we fund that portion and hope by the time they produce that product, the grant money has come in, so we don't have to worry about whether that money is ineligible to be reimbursed by terms of the grant, 'cause sometimes that happens. Is an approach like that possible, to get that engineering work started immediately, but just go up to the first product 15% and then let's see where we are. If the grant comes in, that's great. If the grant doesn't come in, we'll make another appropriation from our reserves.
You certainly have an engineer, you know, phase their quotes, you know, like that.
To do it like that, okay. And what would be a good?
You're still gonna have upfront money.
Yeah. What would be a good budget estimate from your perspective of that? Rough order of magnitude and go higher than you think you need.
Also, I can tell you right now, because that's a difficult question to answer, and it's almost impossible to answer. What I can tell you is, we have, the engineering that was, from the data that was collected in the Girdlestone Marshall Street area, we've got a quote of $440,000 from our engineer to design the fix to that project. Now, that's just the engineer, and then at the end of that, they'll give us a true construction estimate.
I'm only talking about the engineering. I'm only talking about getting a first.
$440,000 for Pico.
Okay.
And then about $250,000 for Pico.
But what I'm talking about is getting a first 15, 20% design submission, and we'll fund it immediately. Of that $700,000 that you need for the total final engineering, to get to that 15% first product, which is sense of how much you would need within that $700,000, if we were to fund it immediately. In other words, when you do an engineering study, you don't go from zero to 100% design.
That's right.
There is a set of calculations, analysis, and early concept.
What they're gonna do is, they're gonna come in, they're gonna start their survey work. That's gonna be step one.
Okay.
Survey work could be $50,000, $60,000.
So why don't we, why don't we fund that and then see where the grant is, and as you're getting closer, you haven't heard from the grant, we can fund the next stage and keep these guys moving.
You can do it however you want. I'll give you the money and I'll.
You say, you say you need about $60,000.
No, well, let me ask, if I could, Consul Ayello, let us reach out to the engineers tomorrow, find out what that number is. I don't wanna guess tonight and, you know, be incorrect. Let's find out what that number is, and then we'll ask the council for it.
We can have a proposal next meeting to.
To vote on, if that's, yeah.
Consul Swope.
Are all the, is all the equipment that would need, that we would need to have included in any grant proposal that we would?
This is just design money. There's no equipment in this. This is just design and engineering.
Do you have a sense, though, of the equipment that we would need?
We'll get that when we get the construction estimate. I mean, it's gonna be a ton of pipe.
The pumps that you're talking about, let's be realistic. There's no pump out there that's gonna pump the tide.
Right.
Speed up, how quickly we evacuate the water?
Right.
All right? I mean, a six-to-eight-inch fire pump, is what they call it, in 150 feet of, or more, 200 feet of six-inch discharge, you could be talking $40,000 to $50,000 for a pump like that, more.
You're sitting next to the man that's most affected by all of this. Every storm, he is affected.
I wanna fix the problem more than anybody in this room.
We want an all-buck immediate evacuation of water in the events. We had a nothing storm today. Girdlestone Road was half-flooded. We had a nothing storm today.
So is Pico.
And we want proactive, not the reactive. Like, we want something proactive, short-term measure. I'm neighbor of Mr. Carlos on the Girdlestone. He's impacted majorly. I'm like minor IC flood, but still, the floodwater comes in my basement, some whenever it rains. So what is a proactive measure in a short term? I know we are chasing fund. I know we are doing the engineering long-term solution, but what is a proactive, small-term solution we can think about?
No, no question. No, no, no. Consul Munson.
Can I make a motion to get enough pumps so that we can actually remedy the water right away for all the major flood zones?
No, it's an operation thing. I mean, not tonight, no. It's not on the agenda, so. I mean, that would be my take on it, but the council president can weigh in.
We have to, we have to get a bid.
We gotta get a bid, yeah.
Get a bid. You can't just write a blank check. I mean, we wanna do something. There's no question about that, but we have to know what we're doing. We can't just blindly go. We're gonna have an action plan by the next council meeting as to cost of pumps, where they would be most effective.
Now we can move the money around.
Where it would cost, when we could get them, and then, as Consul Ayello said, we could look into engineering and design without grant money.
That buys us some time, right, to do the long-term solution, but we do need something immediate. And I just don't know how to make that implemented without doing motions on the fly.
Like I said, we'll get the pricing for the pumps. Director Cala and I talked about that today already, so, I mean.
Consul Swope.
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate again. I think if the pumps are not included in the grant money, then that is something that if we could talk about that next week and decide what we need, because you will know what we need perhaps by next council meeting, is that right? I mean, in terms of pumps.
I'll look into it. You're still gonna, you're still gonna calculate. These pumps that you want are gonna help. If you're all sitting here thinking we're gonna put some pumps in a manhole and we're gonna be able to pump and keep up with what we just got in the last two days, it's not gonna happen. What we'll do, you're still gonna flood, you're still gonna pump. We'll move that water quicker. I just need us to all be realistic, to what your expectations are.
But just, and then I'll.
A pump doesn't resolve this problem by any means.
I got it. Just, I just wanna know that even if we get the pumps, whatever we decide on the engineering side, we will need those pumps.
Correct.
Pumps are good to have, absolutely. Then we'll put them in, in the places that we think that we can evacuate the water.
That's a pump.
Steve, can we, on Girdlestone Road, isn't there a pipe that goes between Captain Jack's and Pleasant Park Yard Club? That has to be replaced? Right, and that would solve the flooding problem. I've lived on Girdlestone Road for 70 years.
That was, that was.
Forty years we've been having a flood and nothing's been done. Forty years. It's not fair to the people that live there. I'm afraid to go away, because the pump honks out on me and we have a bad storm, the house is gonna get flooded. So you're afraid to go away, leave the house. And that's a pipe that has to go through Captain Jack's and Pleasant Park Yard Club. That should be dug up and put in a pump.
It should be relocated, I.
Right. That's a project that could be done now.
So part of the problem is the original flapper valve failed, as we both know, right?
And as far as I know, for 25 years, this issue has been brought up, kicked down, they're kicking that can down the road. And it really, in that instance, I believe the original cost of that was between $30,000 and $50,000. I'm a short timer on Girdlestone. I've only been there 32 years. Trust me, this 70, Mr. McDonald, Julie Murphy, it's her childhood home, okay? The hydraulic action that happens in my basement is unbelievable. And what people don't understand is that hydraulic action, it moves dirt, it moves dirt, okay? And that's what's happening. You know, Carlos, you have soft spots on your basement floor there, okay? Hydraulic action is damaging our homes. I have settlement in my house now like I've never had. It's really, 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 the sense of urgency, you don't understand.
Have we used that pipe?
The outfall pipe isn't gonna solve your problem.
That is, that is completely destroyed.
Not gonna solve your problem, all right? It's still, we talked one second, okay?
Go ahead.
It's still a capacity issue. We have a flapper valve now installed in that manhole.
I was in.
That flapper valve, although it's 200 feet upstream of that outfall pipe. One second, please. Although it's 200 feet upstream of that discharge pipe, it's functioning the same way. It's stopping the tide at that point, yeah. The outfall pipe is coming to that point, right? Your problem is the capacity. Once that closes, you're still getting issue with the capacity and all that network of pipe that is just push joint clay, just letting in all the saturated soil. It's further inundating your pipeline. When the tide goes out and the rain stops, what happens? The water leaves, correct?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
It doesn't leave quick enough, because the outfall pipe, again, doesn't have.
I finished, I finished my statement.
So what are you saying?
25 years.
I'm saying move the outfall pipe and upgrade. You can shift it over. There's an, there's an east, there's a.
Is that a project that can be done without worrying about grants and things like that?
It's a project that can be done, but it's part of the bigger project.
The issue is the flapper valve fails. 25 years of inundation, two pipe high cycles a day. That's 18,250 inundations in a 25-year period. No wonder the system is in complete collapse, because we've kicked the can down the road. Let's do our maintenance. Let's repair the issues as they occur. Stop ignoring the problem. And that's been done for 25 years.
I'm not, I'm not arguing how the system got there. I haven't been here 40 years.
No, no, you know, trust me, I'm not blaming you.
Okay, what I'm saying is, just fixing that outfall isn't gonna solve your problem. You're gonna fix the outfall, but you gotta fix the pipe network.
Well, why don't we do it?
And you're gonna add structures. You're gonna get that.
Why don't we do it?
I wanna do it. We need money.
Forty years we haven't done, for 40 years, we haven't done this.
Steve. We're gonna go into public comment now anyway, which is kind of where we are anyway, but in, you know. Not to support Steve or anything like that, but over the last 10 years, the last 10 years, we've been relatively aggressive, not, obviously, as aggressive enough. And we've addressed, I wanna say we have 50 miles of pipe under the town.
46 miles, we'd probably replace 10 miles of them.
Right, so we have, you know, 75, 70% of the pipes. 70% of the infrastructure is close to 100 years old. Is that accurate statement? And we're talking approximately, you know, numbers change all the time, $60, $70 million to fix the infrastructure in the town, right? We're worried about Tilestone and Girdlestone right now, 'cause that's an immediate issue.
You mean Lake Girdlestone and?
So we will, you know, public comment is open. We will be back with more educated answers to your questions and some sort of dispersment for some sort of pumps that might be a short-term help. They will not be a fix, but we have to address the problem correctly. We can't put a Band-Aid on it. And again, it's been, as you've said and we've heard, it's been not a year, not six months, not two years, not a decade, it's four decades. We will attend, we will address it, and we will be back with you. Understand? Public comment is now open. Public comment, public comment, yes, and then we go back.
Name and precinct.
I'm sorry, Colleen Murphy, 42 Tilestone Road. First, I want to thank Mr. Munson for his support, Mr. Ayello. And Rob, I want to thank you for your comment tonight. I gave you a report from 2017. So in 2017, nothing, since 2017, nothing has been done. So when you're talking about, I did what we call a town check, for those of us that we work with. The day of the storm, we had flooding on Tilestone Road in Pico at 7:00 in the morning. There was no flooding, Bayview, Grandview, Shirley Street, in front of the Elks until the high tide. So I can appreciate what you're saying. It's a drainage problem, but it needs to be taken care of. But we, I know we do 2000, we do overrides and we do two-and-a-half overrides and blah, 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 but the town put out money for schools. They put out money for a beautiful football field. We need to find this money somehow, somehow, and not wait to find out if we get a grant that might take a year to get a grant. I agree with you, Joe. I, we need to come up with the money somehow.
So Mark sent a 17 Girdlestone Road. We have a reserve fund, correct?
Yes, we have.
Why aren't we using it? To get us immediate relief, okay? I know that you wanna talk about it in the next meeting, but you know what? What are the spring storms before meetings, okay? You, you know, I can't stress enough the damage you're doing to people's properties, because we're taking no action, no action whatsoever. We really need to address, and I agree with the pump. You know what? At the, in the middle of Girdlestone Road are the two catch bases, but water doesn't go down it, it comes up it, okay? So the Atlantic Ocean's coming up through that, those catch basing systems, okay? If you can, if you can stop that completely, then you can pump the area, and then a pump is useful. But until then, it's useless. All it's doing is a vicious circle. Goes out to the ocean, goes back up through the manhole, goes through everybody's backyards, it ends up in his basement.
I can go next.
He's, he's the end. He's the end of the line. It comes through my yard, through Murphy's yard, through Mossy's yard, and then unfortunately to his yard.
So I'll go next.
Name and precinct.
So we flooded multiple times, and I think the last one was a few days ago, and that's the fourth time that my basement gets flooded. And we're talking from underneath. It's not water that's.
Hydraulic action.
Yeah, it's pushing, it's going underground and pushing up. And if you want pictures, I have plenty of pictures to share, that you can see it's not sustainable long-term. Look at residents that live in this town, and the value of our properties will go down, right? Nobody will want to buy a property in winter because of situations like this, so that's something that we definitely need to think about, a long-term solution. I have two kids, and my wife, we live there. There's flooding every, it feels like it's every week. I had somebody come in a few days ago to fix the basement, and he was pumping money to fix problems that I shouldn't have to do, right, because it's not something that I'm causing. I've done everything I can to protect the property, but at the same time, there are external factors that I can't control. And long-term, and that's why I came here today, to have a conversation and see what the solution is, because it's not sustainable long-term, and we definitely need to have a solution for everybody that lives in that neighborhood, but for the town as a whole, because I'm sure a long-term, it starts here, and then it will just keep pushing through the town. So it all depends on everybody else, and somehow, we're all gonna pay for it, so that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Claus, 40 Girdlestone Road. Could we look for, this is a health problem also. With that stagnant water, I've picked up a few rodents, throw them away. Could we go through as a health problem and get some grant money, because it is a health problem? Is there money out there because of that? Go that route?
Because we don't know what the contaminants on the street are, covering our backyards.
It's definitely standing waters.
I did, I picked up a couple of rodents. I just threw them in the barrel, but it's a problem, and maybe going through the health thing, we could get some grant money.
Yes, Kathleen.
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, 49 Waldemar Ave. I was gonna speak just a little bit on the MBTA 3A zoning, but I would like to address some of the issues, which, oh, I was a point girl. So I remember my parents back in the day with the flooding and dear Lord, how awful it was. But I think I just, just in hearing, you know, some people talk, I think there's maybe a miscommunication or maybe a misunderstanding of how the finances work in this town. Mr. Cala, who I think is down maybe 17, 19 people in his department, is not in control of the projects that are funded. It's the town council. So I understand, you know, the frustration with things that are going on. I mean, dear Lord, I don't live there. But I think the frustration frankly is going in the wrong place. Mr. Cala gets his funds from the town council. That's how it works, and there seems to be people on the town council that are confused about that. Also, when it comes to Mr. Marino, our amazing town manager that we've had, thank God, for all these years, some of the disrespect he's dealt with at the last council meeting, and some of the misinformation and misunderstanding by certain counselors about whether he can just write a check. I'm confused at how people are not understanding how that works. So look to your town council, ask for meetings, as I have for Mr. Munson. So look to your town council, ask for meetings, I, as I have for Mr. Munson, to discuss issues and have precinct meetings. Going after Mr. Marino or Mr. Calla, when they don't have blank checks, it's funding by the town council. So I'll just leave it at that because I just find it's so hard, like, to listen to our town employees that want to help. I mean, gosh, Mr. Marino has done so much for our community. It's, it's amazing. The strides that he's done for infrastructure, the strides that Mr. Marino has done for trying to get something done at our old middle school. This man deserves so much gratitude for what he's done. And I, I, and I, I'm thankful, yes. Do I still think we might have title issues over there at the old middle school? Yes, I do. But, but, but let's just know, the funding is coming from the town council, they don't have blank checks. But now just to go to the three A, which I wanted to talk about. One, as a resident, I'm requesting a legal opinion. Hudson, Marblehead, and a couple other communities are in litigation right now with the state. Or potential litigation with the state. I'd like a legal opinion as to what the actual consequences are, also taking into account current case law. Also, um, I think it was Zoe, I'd say Miss something, but I don't know her, I don't know her last name, was talking about something really important. But again, quickly, as she should. And I'm gonna look at my phone so I say it right. When we talk about this three A MBTA zoning, which was heavily, heavily endorsed by Senator Lydia Edwards. I've asked her for a couple of meetings, I've not had a response yet. And one of the key thing, things she said, if we do this by right, no permits need to be issued. No special permits, no variances, no amendments, no discretionary approval. This law is outrageous. And I understand the town council is just getting to know it as a lot of us are. Like, we're just starting to learn and understand. But let's not fall on our feet and think we have to be in compliance with this nonsense. There needs to be many public meetings. And not just from someone who, again, from her proposal, is very clearly in favor of this MBTA three A zoning. We need to have outside opinions and we need to have public involvement. And I think the, and again, like, I know it's been asked by certain people and it wasn't addressed in her, you know, very complicated proposal. Where are we at with the eight hundred and eighty units? We should know that. And again, we've got people in the town and people on the council that have talked about when we zone for this, it's not going to, just because you zone for it, doesn't mean someone's gonna develop. I'm not sure what hemisphere these people are on. Look at Revere, look at East Boston, look at Chelsea. If you zone for it, they will come. Look at our school budget, look at our infrastructure, look at Stephen's DPW budget. We can't handle the density and the residents that this will bring to us. So it's not a simple yes or no, this is very complicated. So please, I am begging, as I have before on in, on different issues, the residents of Winter to please listen to this. This is crucial, this is important, and we all need to be involved. But absolutely, I will finish with this. I would like a legal opinion from what the consequences really are in pendants of the current, the current case law that's going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vassili.
Uh, Vassili Malios. Uh, Vassili Malios, precinct five. This three A is very concerning and I'm, I'm gonna probably say a couple of things that Kathleen had already mentioned, but um we need to look at the big picture of this. I understand it's zoning, I understand we don't have to build. But it's gonna come. East Boston, okay? Their three families are getting torn down by developers and they're putting five or six units in the same location. How many people here drove today? Reaching in. I mean, drove.
No contest.
Okay, what do you think's gonna happen? You cannot assume that if it gets built, that they're not gonna drive cars and use public transportation.
Need one, one car?
Say again?
One car, it'll be two.
So we can't guarantee that. Parking as it is, is tight, okay? I looked on the corner of Somerset and Pleasant. When the Somerset uh building was built, they were given the option down there to purchase a parking spot. Why purchase when you could park on the street? The condo units are now being filled up with as many people possible and I have four cars in one unit that live around the block from me and now they're taking up the parking spots on the street. You cannot say this is gonna get rid of congestion, I'm sorry, it's not. We're gonna have more cars. The locations, uh, Mr. DeRoz, one of the locations is gonna be in your area potentially, right? Because I don't, you know, we're not making assumptions. If the right developer comes along for those multifamilies and they offer a pretty penny to those residents there, what stops them from selling and wiping out three or four units and putting up, and putting up, you know, I understand it's not a skyscraper because that's a triggering word in this situation, okay? But it's not gonna be a skyscraper, but they're gonna try and fit as many units as possible because what we're doing is we're gonna get, we're gonna open this all up. We're opening it all up. And then what happens down in your area? The congestion. Ms. Woke, the school committee, you have school experience, you know what happens if classroom sizes start to get bigger. Cost per student goes down. We have classrooms that are now filled to the brim. I taught in a school that had thirty-six students in my classroom, by myself. It's almost impossible to reach every single student the way we want to. You, there's no restrictions on families in this case. There's no restrictions on how many bedrooms. What stops a developer from putting money in their pocket and saying, I'm gonna put as much as I can right there? I don't care what family goes in, I have no, it's all about money in the developer's eyes. We have to look at the big picture. How is this gonna impact our schools? How's this gonna impact our police? How's this gonna impact our fire? How's this gonna impact Mr. Calla and our health department? The MBTA is unreliable, I'm sorry. MBTA is unreliable. You cannot assume that we're gonna just bus everybody to the, the train station. And then assume that the blue line is gonna be working that day. I worked in Boston. There were nights I wanted to come home, get home to my family, and the blue line was down. I had to wait an hour. Two, unreliable. I'm sorry, but you know what? Affordable housing, I understand there, there might be a need, but the need is elsewhere. We cannot continue to put up buildings here, fill every spot possible, fifteen units an acre, minimum, and think we're gonna have, we're gonna be able to sustain that. I'm gonna ask you, please look into this. Holden Mass has a lawsuit again, uh, has a lawsuit that was dropped, it's in appeals court. The town of Milton currently has, uh, they actually got enough signatures so that it went to evoke for the community. We need to look into this further because this is not just the first demand from the state. They're gonna demand zoning, but stops them from demanding building on those lots and expanding the number of eight eighty to a thousand or fifteen hundred. Where is it gonna go? I thank you.
Just a quick question. First of all.
Just name and precinct.
Steve Machinsky, precinct five. I'm not in town here, I've only been here forty years. I served on the advisory board for seventeen years, so I know all the dirt. I'm a school committee for four years, which is thankless. Uh, I would just like a copy, a copy of the presentation that you're gonna get put on the town website from the, um, the architect. So the people in the community can look at. It went pretty fast. Uh, I know I had a fight even though I came to Winter for my three family. And Mr. Joe Harvey said it wasn't worth anything on a piece of paper, but I said I'd sue the town, but then later they came back and allowed us to do that. Here, you're talking about multiple families, no room size, no height size, no nothing. I, I, you really have to think about this a lot. So I, I, the first thing is just the presentation.
The presentation will be on the website tomorrow.
Yeah, I, it has to be, so people, and and the other thing is this went on for a while and I, I, it, there was no public real input or even knowledge of what's going on. And, uh, you know, I, we've worked with grants before and they all have strings and pay for them.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Brendan Cooney, thirty-five Pico Ave. I don't, real quick about the flood thing. I didn't wanna add anything to Steve's or Derek Call's play or anything. I've sent him some emails and he's dealt with us, but at this point, Pico and Girdlestone are probably at the same level of parity. There's, you can't even empty your fire hydrants at that point without us sending work orders in. But right in front of my house is where the flooding occurs. A teenager lost her vehicle in August just from a rainstorm, she didn't move it in time. So I, I, this isn't now a storm basis, this is like a daily life for me. Comes in my basement, I can deal with that, I'm not gonna sit here and worry about it. But at the same time, I think it's nice to know that the town is, has some things in, in store because it really, really needs help. And that's all I just need to say, it really does, so.
Thank you, Brendan.
Marcy. Hi, Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. I thank you all, welcome to the new members that are here, it's gonna be a busy year. I hear that you've probably got the survey that, did you give them the survey?
I gave them some.
Some surveys. In two thousand seventeen, um, there was a survey done, a climate conservation survey done by the town of Winter, the Mass Office of Postal Zoning Management, the Stantec and Root Hold Group. And they had some suggestions about the climate and specifically Pico, specifically Girdlestone that was in it. And I Googled climate resiliency and it came up with pictures that are still happening to our neighborhoods here. And although this isn't, um, um, I'm glad there's being action taken by this board, I appreciate that and I appreciate you putting it on the agenda so quickly and I, um, thank you for that. And I thank Mr. Calla for everything you do with seventeen people or how many people you're under.
I'm down seventeen.
Well, you're down.
We're down seventeen.
Well, you're down seventeen. Well, it's, it's, it's like I said before.
Takes its toll.
It does, and you can't, and we all, we talk about new buildings and, and what new buildings do. New buildings don't bring employees to you and that's what we need. And what I want you to do is, is get monies from the reserve to start this pro, the process. Get the engineers and don't send this to committee. Please take our livelihoods, our families, our health in, to your hearts as if it was your home. And, and get this, start, start this process now and get this ready because, um, what I do in my yard on Tylenstone Road is that if, um, you drain into my yard, I pump it out, goes around the corner and comes back.
Back to Girdlestone.
Yes, back to Girdlestone, yeah. So it, I've lost so much in my, um, backyard, so many inches of soil and landscaping in my backyard up to my driveway. I put in a leaching field, put down my, swooped a new driveway in so it goes to the middle of the yard. And I run a daycare, a daycare that needs two exits at all times. I have to have a safe, clean space. This was a rain event and in two thousand seventeen, it was a high, it was a high tide, but it was a rain event. We're having storms and I think in this survey, it said that we will be having more storms, our, our climate is changing. So if we can get the engineers in place that will redesign Winter, I mean, you're gonna be putting more, we can't be putting more people in here. We are, we are sinking. Well, we're sinking basically and we need to be resilient. And they did it on Shore Drive, right? The EP, um, the D, the DCR did it on Shore Drive. They built, um, they built a beautiful, it's on a very pretty beach that I remember. But there's not mu, not much more flooding going down there, it goes to Shirley Street. And if you look, wait a minute, I have a picture right here. If you look in nineteen thirty-two, it was happening in nineteen thirty-two on this survey. There's a hundred and eighty-eight pages of pictures that we haven't really found the answers to yet. We need to find these answers now so we can live in this beautiful community and, um, you know, be resilient, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
I'm looking forward to your decisions on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcy.
I have a handout.
Yes.
I think the tide's coming in right now. The oceans are rising.
Jacked out precinct.
Thank you. Jacked out precinct. I'm, I'm noticing that the camera doesn't work for the person who's speaking, they used to do that. Uh, this is a picture of French Square. Uh, it, it used to be a, a warm and inviting place to be. French Square again. This doesn't look like warm and inviting to me.
You got signs up, Donna.
So, as I was saying, can I see one of those? Can I get these picture on? Thank you, Jim. This is a picture of French Square, it's a handout that I've given to the town council. Uh, so we can do something about, uh, French Square, the center of town, a, a project that was, uh, cost the town, you know, fifteen or fifteen million dollars. And, uh, now it's a, a place for dogs to, you know. Possibly we could get a, uh, NVPP grant to, uh, fix the situation down, something has to be done. Whether it's a perimeter fence on three quarters of the, uh, property or something like that to keep the people that, and it's really the people, it's a lot of people, but people come out of that Somerset building after they get home from work, they take their one or two dogs over to here and they're completely ruining this greenery. When a dog pees on a, on a parkland, like down at Linguside Park, the roots of the grass are six to eight inches deep. When they pee on sod, it's immediately dead. So something has to be done. Maybe take it up, seed it, fence it so that this, you know, this could grow properly, or, or fence it off so that people, and, you know. Two weeks ago, uh, uh, was the park, where my black truck is parked. We all pee over from Somerset Building and she started peeing on the sign that says, no dogs on the lawn. And so I said, can you read? And she replied and said to me.
Yep.
Oh, well, they're very funny. Out of here, you know, who are you? I said, I give up, so. I had many pictures of people urinating their dogs on this park. If I'm taking a picture of somebody, are you taking my picture? I said, no, I'm taking a video. I'm not sending you a film. So, uh, something has to be done. It's, the only recourse I have or the only penny I have is put the fence up like it used to be. That way the people can't traverse on the ground from front to back. And then put a few, uh, benches out here so that the, the mothers with their toddlers can enjoy this. And they used to enjoy this, uh, area immensely. They would come down and there were trade seats, you know, a couple mothers would bring their children down, they'd go to a store and then the vice versa. And, and, and all of this is right done. There's nothing like that now, fucking out. So this is, this has transformed, uh, intensely. And I hope the person that, uh, accepted this design will do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duff. Yes.
Tom Sacco, precinct two. First, I wanna dovetail off of Ms. Capuccio's comments regarding the town manager. I've been involved, paying attention to the local politics for a long time and I think Anthony's the best guy we've had, best person we've had for the job since. And he's endured, he has endured disrespect since his interview process. I too echo the, the sentiment that he doesn't deserve such respect and would hope that the council who disrespected him last meeting. I too echo the, the sentiment that he doesn't deserve such respect and would hope that the council who disrespected him last meeting would apologize to him in public so that we can ensure a good working relationship. That being said, on to three A. I just want to make a general comment. We're being told the thrust, the, the idea behind this is to flood the market with housing to lower the cost of housing because we have a housing crisis. But at the same time, out of the same mouth, we're hearing, "But you don't have to build." It's a schizophrenic plan as far as I'm concerned. It doesn't make one bit of sense. The left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, or you're trying to lie to us or trick us. We're not stupid. To Kathleen's point again, if you zone it with none of the requirements necessary, a permit pulling and all that stuff, if you make it a layup, they're going to build. Foolish on its face to think otherwise. Lastly, with the flooding issue, I just want to make kind of a general comment to the folks here from, from the flooded areas. I feel for you. I'm very fortunate. I don't live in one. However, years ago, uh, when I was supporting Jeff Turco on his first reelection bid, he had successfully, though it was difficult, battled through the, uh, Morton Street issue, wanting to put an emergency access road. Started out as a road just for traffic flow at the fort. And it ended with a compromise. Imagine that, a compromise. Where he's, where it was just an emergency access road. We still own the parking spaces behind the governor's park. If that project was allowed to go through, the people of Morton Street and Bank Street at least would have had a, there would have been a plan in place to start trying to address that. And my understanding is it would have at least addressed the problem to some degree, but it would have been something. But that reelection campaign was about hate. And when we don't pay attention to the issues, and when we don't show up to meetings, and when we don't, look, this is what you end up with. So I, I don't mean to be rude, but some of this is our own making. Because we come in in the, in the eleventh hour when it's too late. Now I realize that some of this has been going on for forty years. The other part of it is the council. The last two, three iterations of this council have had their priorities in completely different places. And it's time you come here and hold them accountable. I mean, we're, we're having fights about flags and parties on the, on, on the, on the, on the Ingleside Park. I, I suggest this council applies for an extension for this three A thing and focuses on your problems now. It's amazing to me that this is suddenly a hot issue for precinct, precinct two councillor. Where have you been for two years? You've been sitting here and this problem's been going on. It's been happening for, like they said, forty years. It's time for this council to have a priority for the people, all the people, and the people, the homeowners, especially the people that are flooding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, in the back.
Hi, Alyssa Gamble, uh, precinct four, Grover's Ave. Um, I am a member of the planning board, and I'm just speaking on my own behalf, but I'm also an architect and a university planner. I'm really encouraged by the number of people here tonight who care so deeply about infrastructure and about zoning. And I love how many people are coming out right now and learning about, um, these new requirements. Just speaking for myself, um, I was in the same boat a year ago, feeling very overwhelmed by this requirement, feeling like there's no way that we should be held to the same, um, standards as communities that are truly along transit. And, um, I've been learning about it for a year now, and, um, I understand what our requirements are. And I also, um, understand for me that I'm seeing this as an opportunity, um, to, to make some changes to our zoning that could really also help our community. And what I mean by that is, for example, we have a lot of three-deckers right now that are, um, non-conforming. And, um, just as a way to encourage investment in those buildings in a legal way, for example, this rezoning would support something like that. So, um, I encourage everybody to keep the same enthusiasm and to keep learning about this. As our town planner mentioned, we, we want to educate everybody as to where we are now so that we can, you know, come to a conclusion that really works for this town. So, um, I hope that everybody can keep an open mind as I have.
Yes, Julia.
Thank you. Uh, Julia Waller, precinct two. I'm a former planning board member with Alyssa, and I want to echo a lot of her comments. Um, really have been actually enthused by how much, uh, attention this has been getting, the zoning initiatives, MBTA communities. Well, tonight's presentation from Zoe was great and information-packed and very important. I think it skipped over a lot of the context that we need and the background to understand why the state would be doing something like this, why a Republican governor, Governor Baker, would institute this. It came from that administration. And this information is really only as good as the context, right? At the end of the day, this is about our state taking action to address a crisis that's affecting our economy, our environment, and our quality of life. I have a lot of data, you know, jobs, population, how it's not keeping pace with housing, but I don't think we're even at a place to hear that right now. But we are at a place to hear why this is important, why this matters, why this is, why we can see ourselves in this. And how zoning is an opportunity to actually approach the issues that matter to us, feeling like we might be at risk of displacement, or like the working class can't afford to be here, or the retirees can't find a place to downsize. By zoning for that, we can steer the, the growth that is going to happen no matter what. It's already happening. Our population has been growing. Our school enrollment, enrollment has not been. I have the data here that shows housing units are about six percent of school enrollment is at point five. There's just not a correlation, but we need to understand that before we can move together. So the zoning is an opportunity to get that right, to get things like parking and height and setbacks in place so that we can respond to the growth that's already happening. And then doing nothing is, is not the option. So I hope we can support our planning board. I look forward to the public process, lots of, you know, infographics, communications that make this meaningful, that make this not just something the state is forcing on us, but giving us an opportunity to respond to the surges in jobs and in population that we see without the housing to creep up with it. And that's why we see bidding wars. That's why we see astronomical prices, and people can't find a place to live when and where they want. We want housing choice, and zoning like this gives us ability to do that by giving us a, a range, you know, by allowing us to build the way we used to. When Winthrop was built, we didn't have restrictive zoning. So we had single families, triple deckers, two families, mixed in with commercial. We can't do that anymore. So Winthrop today is illegal. It would be illegal to build Winthrop today. And the MBTA Communities Act allows us to build the way we used to, but to do it in a place that makes sense rather than letting it bleed into the, into the neighborhoods. And I remember some of our candidates talking about why that's important, where development should happen, in our commercial cores, not in our neighborhoods. So this allows us to do it. It gives us the tools to manage growth effectively, sustainably, equitably. But we need to learn why, why we got to this situation. So rather than, you know, rattling off data or why not, I just wanted to give you guys the information. This is just a one-pager and some of the school enrollment data as well as some housing statistics. So, thank you. I know this is an emotional issue, and I hope we can have an open mind and communities will learn to work, work with us. And a lot of the grants we've talked about tonight for flooding, we would lose access to that.
Propaganda. I love it.
Yes.
So, this is unbelievable.
Yes. Yes.
Hello, uh, my name is, my name is Rachel, and, uh, please forgive me. I'm actually, uh, I'm not from Winthrop. Uh, I apologize, but I really like Winthrop.
Excuse me one second. I just need a motion. Motion to suspend the rules. You have to be a Winthrop president to speak a public comment. So there's a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion, seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I was, I was listening very carefully about, uh, the need for monies to address, uh, the flooding issues. And I know that there's a vote that's coming up in Boston, uh, the Boston City Council in January twenty-fourth. And so I know there's thirteen point three million dollars in counterterrorism money. However, I have heard discussions around some of that possibly being used for natural disasters. And so again, I've been carefully listening to what different people have been saying, and it sounds to me like that could possibly fit into that, you know, that context. And so I'm wondering if that could be a possibility to help Winthrop. And, and if that's the case, I, I highly encourage Winthrop residents, uh, to reach out to the Boston City Council and respectfully ask them to please do their jobs so that this mu, uh, this money can be released to different communities, including Winthrop and Revere and Everett and, uh, Chelsea and Somerville. Because of course, Boston, uh, as some of you, as some of you seem to know, uh, is acting as a fiduciary. So, uh, the votes on it, uh, on this money, it determines not only if it gets distributed in Boston, but these other municipalities that I mentioned.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, Bill Strick, precinct five. Just want to make a couple of comments about that housing presentation. If I was incorrect there, what the, the district that was labeled Winthrop, I'm sorry, Maine and Revere was actually Maine and Winthrop, the way it looked to me on the council, that's one thing. And I noticed, um, you know, some, some decisions looked like they already made. So I was kind of disappointed, quite frankly, that the council was not involved in this issue earlier on before those districts were kind of drawn, because it's very hard to change what's kind of been put in place before there's been a fuller discussion, because now it's gonna be like, oh, I don't want it in my district. Let's put it over here, whatever. So I think it would have been more helpful if this, the council had been involved early in the process. And it seemed to me like, again, that if there was a mislabeling of the district, there, there, there's some problems there. So I just hope the council will, uh, approach this with an open mind and that the whole project is on the, uh, discussion, not just the areas already outlined.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, Hurley Hope, district four. Um, I'd like you, um, to speak on the, um, the buildings and the eight hundred and sixty units, and I want people to consider the safety factors for the areas that they're even talking about. And it sounds like it's already a done deal. These areas have been chosen and picked and voted on. And I want to know, like, first of all, who decided to even apply for this grant because we're adjunct? Okay? The, the laws and regulations are different than when you're on the community, when you're on the lines, and when you're not on the lines. There's totally different laws and regulations that go to these. Second, some of the areas have already, we've done feasibility, traffic feasibility study. This is one of my safety concerns for the schools in the area where they're talking about Revere Street and doing it on the bus lines on Revere Street. That's where our kids go to school. You know, all the bus lines is where the schools are on the bus lines. They've already had probably, in the past two years, five kids have gotten hit by cars right in that same area. The high school all melts into the area where they're talking about development according to the map. That's not safe for this community. Also, the traffic this weekend, and whether it's flooding or whether it's what, when you look at, you're gonna put eight hundred and fifty more units with no, we don't even know how many more people. Like, the traffic was backed up. I live on Taylor Street from Orion Heights. I had to drive someone to the hospital. You couldn't go out through Revere. We have to look at our safety. Like, if you need to get to a hospital in Winthrop, adding eight hundred and sixty more units, that's at least sixteen hundred more cars. In my house, it would be thirty-six hundred more cars, okay? Because we have a lot of cars in my house. So we have one more coming up, all right? So you're talking, they, we have two more coming up now. So you're talking automobiles, you're talking the fire department. You could not get all the way to the Dunkin' Donuts from Orion Heights, not the Dunkin' Donuts at Orion Heights. You couldn't get to the Highlands, okay? It was a dead start traffic. You couldn't get out through Revere. What's gonna happen in an emergency for our community with all these additional units? And I appreciate what everybody else has already said, because I'd like to repeat what they said. And why is this being, it's a done deal? And I don't want to, I came here because some people complained about French Square, how it's cement, and why didn't you get involved, and it doesn't look as good. Why didn't you get involved? This is the first meeting I've seen to get involved in this. It's all being done behind our backs. Why? Why is it being done? Changing the zoning for that, this is a small, s, ocean side community, and we want to keep it as a small, ocean side community. I, I drive to Revere. I work in Revere. I could get to work in four minutes, six tops. Now it takes me twenty-eight minutes to get to work because of the development, it, just in that area. Okay? We're in trouble trying to get medical help and safety for our community, especially in the area they're talking about, the bus lines. That's where our kids are. Like, your kids can't even go across the street to get a slurpee anymore with, without getting, it, it being really, really dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Paul. Paul Carruccio, Ingleside Ave. I would have to agree that a lot of us were unaware of what was going on here. And, um, I'm also, um, apologize for coming here a little late as I came from a meeting, and I don't know the discussion that happened prior to this. I will tell you that I am wholly opposed to this three A. And I don't think that, well, first of all, it's a burden on all the services of the community. You had nine hundred units of housing. Um, there's, how many children go, that are going to be in that housing? I don't know. Um, nine hundred people, you know, two or three or four kids per family. How much it costs to educate a child a year? Twenty-two thousand dollars. Can I ask the teacher over there, is it twenty-two thousand dollars? Times, I don't know, how many more children would that be on nine hundred housing units, two thousand kids? Is that forty-four million dollars a year? Are we prepared to, um, to, you know, to invest another forty-four million dollars just in the, you know, school budget to educate these children? The, the, the burden on the services, do we have that? We can't get in or out of town as it is. You got these cars. If there's a, a, a problem, it's, it's a safety problem. Everybody here is a homeowner, and you're asking us, um, you're asking to decide something for us that every one of us as homeowners are going to pay the price. This has to go to a vote of the entire community. We should not be dictated by anybody for our own home rule. It's inappropriate. And the amount of money they're way in front of our face, oh, we have to take the money, we have to take the grants. That's not guaranteed. We don't know what that's gonna be. We don't even know that the money's going to be there. So I am wholly against this, and I think everybody in this community should demand a vote of this community on this article. Furthermore, it just came, the reason I'm late, I came from a, um, meeting of the Winthrop Republican Town Committee. And the Winthrop Republican Town Committee unanimously, um, is against this proposal and once again see this go to a vote of the entire community.
Respectfully, Mr. President, can I just, uh, say, if, I apologize, but if everybody could just keep it down when other people are speaking, I'm trying to listen to everybody, so just when they do their public comment. You were doing the public comment.
I just have, um, one, one piece of, uh, one, one thing to share and then a question. The Winthrop Public Schools right now, the middle high school, the brand-new middle high school, was a, uh, agreed-upon enrollment number of nine hundred and seventy students. You know what it is right now? One thousand twenty-eight. Okay? We're over capacity. Where are they gonna, where are students gonna go if we open up for housing? Are we gonna build another middle high school? Where, where's that gonna go? We're very short with green space here. And you can say it's gonna avoid the neighborhoods. No, it's not gonna avoid the neighborhoods. We're putting in the wa, if, per the proposal or per, per the recommendation. We have the water frontier area, which is all neighborhoods. We have the CBD, which is surrounded by neighborhoods, right? We're a small community. You cannot say we're not, we're gonna avoid all the neighborhoods. You're not. And we're being affected by one building right now with the Somerset. It is. It's affecting our neighborhood. The question I have is, how many, um, how many signatures do we need to get this to a town vote?
I don't have that answer right now. Yes.
Talk Sacro Precinct Two. I don't know if this is allowed through the council president to the former planning board member?
No.
Is that not allowed?
No.
Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you. Marcy.
I'm Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. It's wonderful to see everybody here, to have these discussions. I appreciate that. What I heard was that it takes, to have precinct meetings, it takes six votes of a council to move this forward. Is that, is that what we were talking about? Did I hear that?
Ultimately, when the zoning comes back to the council sometime late fall, if that's what happens, it would take six votes.
So we have time as a community to meet with our councillors, to get the reaction, to get more, um, community involvement, not just, um, our full room right here, and to have good discussions about this and to get the answers that we want. And the presentation was great. It's not written in stone. It's just in the preliminary, preliminary. And as far as... And as far as, I think I said this at the last meeting, and I don't want to repeat myself, you're all here because you chose to, to come forward and support your community, and I appreciate that. So I also appreciate the fact that most of us, most all of us have been respectful and always asking important questions. And I think we should still continue with that, without demonizing one, two, three, four, whoever doesn't meet your point of view. So let's start from here, let's organize, let's have good discussions, and let's keep our respect on the high point. And let's not forget about the flooding. Let's get back to the flooding, and I appreciate it all.
Thank you.
I think it's very important that I look at the camera. I want to let everybody know.
We'll get your better side, yeah.
Not just this group. We've had many people stand up, and they're not recognized because of not saying, so, you know, people, people do watch the reruns and try to figure out what was said at the meetings. But I gave the town counselors a picture of French Square, but I didn't hear anybody comment on my picture. Thank you. Is there going to be a study group? Is there going to be a subcommittee to discuss this project? I know I brought this forth last summer. Nothing's been done about it, except for, well, the two signs, appreciate the two signs, but of course the dog peed right on the sign. I want somebody to say that they're going to take this measure up to figure out what to do with this blighted area. It's not very welcoming. I don't hear anything from anybody here. Is somebody on this floor going to take up this issue? Are you going to have a, a, a group get together, Jim, to discuss the issue and try to figure out what to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I still didn't hear anybody.
This is a public comment period. We're not here to answer your questions. Anything brought up during a public comment period is taken down in notes, and we will address it. Yes.
I'm Kathy Russo, thirty-four, Gerdlestone. In speaking about flooding on Gerdlestone, it seems as though everyone thinks it's when the heavy rain, it doesn't necessarily have to be heavy rain. We were flooded out this afternoon, there was no, there was three inches of snow, no heavy rain. And some of us are prisoners in the house. When this happens, we cannot get out of our houses either. So I want it to be known, it's not just the high tide Wednesday. I think when I woke up before 6:00, we were flooded until well after dark, and it floods directly in front of my house and Nell's house, because there's two sewers, a rake in front of our house. We can't get our cars out of our driveways or walk out onto the sidewalk. We're talking flooding well over the sidewalks, onto the property.
It's up to my second step.
I happen to have a sump pump that we've not, I shouldn't say it out loud, we've not lost power, and it just goes constantly, and I'm afraid it's just going to wear out its welcome, it's just going to go so fast. But we are actually prisoners on days that it's not heavy rain or it's not astronomical high tide. It happens very frequently. A lot of people have lost cars. We try to warn newbies in the neighborhood, you know, get your car off the street, or we call, we let each other know in the neighborhood when it's going to happen, but if someone's not home, you don't know. But it's a little bit more than just astronomical high tides and heavy rain. It's, it's become, in the last, it's, I mean, it's been that way for a long time. I'm a newbie too, I've only lived there 35 years. It just, it, it is the top of all of us, that's what it is. We really, we talk about it, we know Mark Senate has done a lot, Paul has talked to people, but it really needs to be done, and most of us don't fall, because we know people are putting in complaints. And it might think it's a few people, but it's really a lot more, but we just don't want to add everybody when we know someone is speaking for us.
So, Mark Senate, just move again. I, I just think we all need to know that there's actionable things happening in the very near future to alleviate, I've always said, if you can keep the flooding in the street and out of our properties, which is probably only 20% that we need take care of to keep it in the street, if it's not in my, if it's not flowing through my backyard, and I have plenty of videos for you, I think Carlos could put a montage together for us. If we can keep 20% of it out of the, out of the yards, that resolves a huge issue, because now Marcy doesn't have it in her backyard, I don't have mine, Jay Murphy doesn't have it in his backyard, you know, that's the biggest thing, is we need to just decrease the volume so it stays out of the yards. I have a man, I call it my managed flood in my basement, when I used to just get little cracks of weeping, okay? It's a managed flood in my basement, every event. Jay Murphy, this past summer, Mark, I left my back door open, just in case that rain really comes, can you check on everything for me? He's afraid to go on vacation.
Everybody's afraid to leave their house.
So just, I, I would like a commitment from the committee tonight, that there's going to be something in the very near future as action and a long-term solution.
You have a commitment from this committee? That we will have an action plan in place. If we have to meet before the next meeting, which is two weeks from now, we will meet. You know, I don't want to act blindly, because that's crazy, right? So we want to, we've instructed the town manager, we've instructed DPW director to look at the best course of action, to have some sort of immediate, not remedy, but some sort of help, and we will do that. If, it's not necessarily in terms of money for a short fix, we can meet on a 24-hour notice for an emergency meeting. So that will be done. I will promise you, we will have an action plan in place well before, we will have an action plan, worst-case scenario, by the next meeting, but hopefully, I'm more than welcome anytime to have an emergency meeting.
That's, I think that's where I'm looking for it.
Is that both Pico and Gerdlestone, or just Gerdlestone? And the owners, I say that is because they were mentioned together.
They were mentioned together, and we're well aware of this, and we feel terribly it's, you know.
My neighbor's going to ask me, so I want to know what to tell them.
Hold on one second. Do we have more than one?
We have three. If we know them, do we want to allow them to speak?
No, we're chat only, we're chat only.
Okay, so we have one.
One chat, okay, what, let's finish in here first. And we're, we're going to take three more questions, and then we're going to go to Zoom, and then we're going to move on, and there's, you're more than welcome to stay for another hour and a half of the next public comment. So we're going to go one, two, three. So, yes, Julia.
Thank you, Julie Larsen, again, Precinct Two. In addition to the flooding, which we all agree on, I just want to quickly turn our attention to something else where I think we can find common ground, and that's the fact that Winthrop is losing its affordability. It is becoming hard for working families, people looking to downsize, young professionals to find a house they can afford in Winthrop. Can we all agree on that? Not on the solutions, but that's a problem. What are we going to do about that? That a starter home in the marsh in a flood zone just sold for almost $700,000? What's the down payment on that, 140K? This is a problem. We need solutions. And I'm not, I'm not right now saying 3A is the solution, it's a solution. And the ways don't even help us to work is to create that solution that works for us. It's up to the planning board. It's up to us to make the zoning work for us. All the state is saying is that you need to legalize apartments. Just need to make them legal. Right now, they are straight up illegal. Lots of our houses are illegal, right now, non-conforming, right? So to get a permit, it doesn't mean, what Kathleen said, it doesn't mean you can get, you can do whatever you want, you don't need a special permit. It means you can build by right, but it means you still have to do height limits, setbacks, parking restrictions, design guidelines. It's not a free for all. So I hope that recognizing that we have a shared pain point, we want to become a city or be a town where everyone can find housing. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, we're a city government, a city and town, we're people who are trying to live in a community. So this is a solution, one of many, and I hope that we can find that that's common ground, and that that zoning can work for us. So that's what I wanted to share.
I'm Colin Costa, Precinct Two. We were flooded, you know that, Jim, because I texted you immediately about, but we just need some kind of emergency plan that we tell these neighbors, these neighborhoods, like Banks Morton. This is real, we need to go. I have three cars that are dead in my driveway. They're gone. I have a 92-year-old woman across the street that I am responsible for, and I have tried to get the street shut down, and nine times out of 10 it works, but the one time it doesn't, then you have Governor's Park is open, and everyone floddy, and the puddle sending all into our houses. We can't have it anymore. We just can't do it. It, it's done, I'm done. I give. We just need some help.
Thank you.
I, I know that you guys are all trying.
Yeah, Tom DeGuerin, Precinct Three. I came to learn about the 3A, and I thought it was complicated before. I think it's even more complicated now. And there is a lot to study about it. The ramifications are social, economic, there's a future of a change in the town, sea level rise, things are happening that will require a great deal more study, and I, I can't come to a conclusion immediately. And I look forward to the council and everyone in the town thinking about this even further to see what all the ramifications are. If we have more people in the town, we have more income into the town, does that, does that match the extra costs? There's arithmetic to do, and that's hard to do.
Thank you. Do we have, we're going to, we've been going over almost an hour here, and we've been...
Ten seconds.
No, not right now, thank you, though. But we have somebody that's been also waiting on, with a chat.
Yep. Serena Rose, she lives at 529 Pleasant Street. She's on a table, unable to attend this evening, she's home with her two children. She wants the opportunity to share with you how deeply concerned and safe for her family she is. She's had mold, mosquito infestation, no heat, no water. We have poured our savings account into trying to waterproof our home. We've installed a sump pump, we've cemented our home, built a wall, but nothing is strong enough. Every time it rains, contaminated water pools into our backyard, front yard and side yard. Every time there is a flood, we lose thousands of dollars. It is not fair, as a young family, our savings account that we built for our future hopes and dreams are gone, trying to protect our home, when a town is ignored for years, the issue. Before we build more in this town, please consider the people who live here and are deeply suffering. Thank you.
We're going to move on, we're having a second session of public comment shortly. Correspondents? Thank you. Correspondents?
We've had several emails pertaining to town council respect towards each other. We've had several emails concerning MBTA rezoning, asking the town council to vote out. Several emails concerning our Zoom, and wants to keep having Zoom. And we had several emails on Gerdlestone and Tyles.
Committee reports, there are none. School Department report, the school department has met once since our last meeting. It was the first meeting of the year, welcomed in new members, and also re-elected Jen Powell as the chair of the school committee. This is Jen's second term. Jen's done an incredible job. She's a very level-headed person who listens to all the issues, and I commend her for that and thank her for taking on that role again. Town Ministers report, we are done, CDICR?
They meet tomorrow night.
Okay. Old business, once again. Good Energy is back here. We have been informed by Good Energy, we did give permission to have our town manager sign the plan, and due to that, we physically have to approve the plan itself. So there was a motion by Vice President Belcher that the town council approved the town of Winthrop Municipal Aggregation Plan presented by Good Energy. There is a second.
Second.
By Councilor DeRoz, any discussion? Seeing done, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and hopefully this is the last time we'll be going for Good Energy. Not that it's not a good thing, but appointments to the subcommittees, I have appointments here, which I will pass out to each committee member, and they will be on the website tomorrow. I have left a couple of, it's supposed to be yellow, but my printed it in printing color, but a couple of placeholders, I guess is the best way to put it. So I will pass those out today, they will be on the town website tomorrow. Gerdlestone, Tyleson, we've addressed appointment, I do have one appointment. Motion at the town council, accept the appointment made by town council president Lattieri to appoint Scott Mahoney Wright to the CDICR Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. There's a motion, there's a second by Vice President Belcher, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Scott, for stepping up. Look at that, in five minutes, we are back to public comment. The camera's that way, though.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the people that were in the gallery here, if anybody in the Gerdlestone Tyleson has used the equipment from the fire department, pump out and then fan, usually they just pump it off and they just leave you with a fan helping windows, helping home on the strike of themselves. Has that been?
They have.
Thank you, Jeff. Public comments. Anything on Zoom?
No, just, like I said.
I'm sorry.
Mark Senate, Precinct Two. Again, like I said, we just, we're looking for your help. That's, and that's, I think we are, had enough to say about it already, but really we're looking for your help in the worst way possible.
And again, I will say, and, you know, this is a public comment period, this is not time for us to answer questions and stuff like that, it's time for us to take your input. I, I can't speak for everybody, but I'm pretty sure I can, that you have our firm commitment. We are not experts in flooding and such, but we, you have our commitment that we will be back before this municipality within the next two weeks. At latest at our next meeting, if we can get an emergency meet, we can't get an emergency meeting, if there's a reason to get that emergency meeting in place, we will do that. I promise you our commitment.
So how am I able to keep in the loop on the progress that is being made?
You can feel free to call me every day if you'd like. Honest to God, I mean, you can, I'm easy to, I'm as accessible as anybody can be.
Where we are in the process and, and what steps are being taken, so that honestly, I get a ton of phone calls from everybody on the street and in this. I get a ton of calls, I'd like to be able to tell them, hey, here's what, here's what they're doing, you know? At least if we have somebody in the neighborhood that says, hey, this is what's happening this week, okay? And keep everybody updated, then they just don't get mad at you guys, but spinning, spinning wheels. I would be happy to keep everybody moving forward on that.
All right, I am telling you now, we have made a commitment to the town manager and to the DPW director to get back to us as soon as possible. We will have your precinct counselor, who I'm sure he will be happy to...
I'll be liaison.
To be the liaison between you and Mr. Senate.
Thank you, Mark.
My cell and my...
Appreciate it.
All right, any other public comment?
I just want to raise one thing.
Yes, Director Cal.
The notion on the pumps.
Yes, we, it's done.
Before we go and purchase a $50,000 pump potentially, I think we need to investigate stormwater regulations. I don't know that without a permit, we can pump untreated water from a manhole into the ocean.
And this is why, excuse me, excuse me, this is why we're trying to figure out answers that we can get, because we are not...
Things contaminated settle up. So, I don't want to promise you a pump and then...
No, I'm not asking you to promise me a pump, I'm asking us, I'm asking you and Tony, or we're asking you and Tony to come back to us with the best feasible solution for as best as we can, a short-term Band-Aid help.
There's really no short-term Band-Aid. There's really no short-term Band-Aid to be perfectly.
Look into, but we can look into a pumping situation. We could do that.
I promise you, I will look into the ability to, to get a special permit, potentially. That's all I can promise.
All right. Yes, public comment.
Just really quick, Julia Wallace again. I'm excited about the CPA committee, the Community Preservation Act. And I, I'm not sure if those funds, I know it's for affordable housing, open space, or historic preservation. But could it be, I know this is not a Q and A, but could those funds be used also for stormwater management and creative grid infrastructure to help address these flooding issues? Maybe through some sort of redefinition of terms. But the open space designation of those funds could be a great solution to this incredibly prevalent and pervasive issue.
I don't believe so, we will, I will have.
Yeah, we'll find out, yeah.
CPA, which I would love to help with.
Right. I, yeah. I was gonna call you.
Did you?
Yeah.
All right, public relations. We have, I, I'm sorry, is there one chat?
A couple, yep. We have Shannon Pullos. She quotes that the school enrollment figures are wrong. And she believes that people should listen to our school superintendent, not a citizen not knowledgeable of those figures. We would encourage all the town councils and citizens to attend finance committee meetings as at the end of the day, flooding and additional population and burden on our community needs funds, which we don't have. We do have one from Kurt Malah, who hasn't gotten in yet, but if he does, I'll put it in the bucket.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question about 3A. Is this something that's being forced on us by the state?
We're getting, we have those questions as you do as well. And that's why we did not ask any questions of Zoe tonight, because we're going to be compiling questions as a council. And I'm sure that will be one of the questions as to the town's.
So rezoning, you could potentially rezone my resident A area as mixed use? Yes.
I'm not.
Yes.
That, that's, that can't be acceptable. Okay, all right, so you're in a learning phase as well as we are.
We are.
Okay.
Oh, I'm speaking for myself, I can't speak. I am in a learning phase for this. January 18th, once again, I will mention it, International Night at the Young Middle School Gym from 6:00 to 7:30. That's this Thursday. It's a great event. Anita Preble does an incredible job. I thank her for her service to our children and for this specific event. And we do still need board members. I know there were a couple. We will get a list out of the exact boards that are in need right now. Anything else? Drive a motion for, to adjourn. Motion by, motion by Mr. Senate. Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Consular Monson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.